Good afternoon, good evening, welcome to the Monday, September 20th, 2021, City of Albany Work Session for City Council. Now can we call them into order and roll call please?
Yes, Your Honor, Mayor Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Councillors Olson, Novak.
Here.
Bartholomew. Kupczynski.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
And Smith.
Here.
Four councillors present, Your Honor.
Thank you, we will acknowledge the other councillors when they do arrive. So business from the public. We have business from the public. As for the persons wishing to address the council, speakers will be limited to three minutes unless extended by the mayor. Councillors should hold their comments until business from the council. All written material has been forwarded to the councillors and then entered in the public records. Instructions for getting copies of the public records is on the city website under Business from the Public. The following person or persons submitted items for the record. All materials, excuse me, have been forwarded to the council. Ms. Ms. Mary Warner of Albany. No one else signed up to speak, the mayor made the exception for Mary. Thanks for your comments and Mary, you have the floor. Is Ms. Warner here?
I don't see her.
I'll give her a couple of seconds. Is the caller Mary Warner?
It's the city number.
The, so I'll wait, so I'll go ahead and move on to the next item. If the council will allow me to come back to her, would you be okay with that?
I think that's good.
You guys are okay with that? Can I get a thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
Okay, thank you. So next on the agenda item is open T hangar lease rate increase. Airport manager Rob Romeo. Mark Patsic Airport Advisory Commission Chair. And your items on the page two and three of the document. So, Rob Romeo, you have the floor?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening councillors, Mr. Mayor. We're here tonight to discuss the Albany Municipal Airport Open T Hangars. The T hangars, which this whole purpose is the storage of the airplanes are located at the north end of the runway. Are owned by the City of Albany. The single structure has 11 open T hangars that are leased now individually for $80 per month. In 2019, we increased the lease rates from $40 a month to $80 a month per individual hanger. The Albany Advisory Commission would like to raise the rates to $115 per month per individual hanger. And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce the Albany Airport Commission Chair, Mark Patsic, to explain the increase further.
Mr. Patsic, if you're there.
Yep, good afternoon, everybody, can you hear me just fine? Okay. One of the reasons why we wanted to do this as far as raising the rates is because throughout the state of Oregon, Oregon Department of Aviation puts up a report every year that states where people are with certain hanger rates and all this and we've always, the Albany Airport has always been on the very low side as far as hangers that we control and that we own. The $40 was really low, the $80 is still very low, the average T hanger in in the state of Oregon is running, we're between $122 and $125 per month in rental, equivalent to the hangers that we have out there. So all we wanted to do was bring up, bring it up to $115 a month, so it's fair for the city. Because that's one thing that I feel that I've been tasked with a little bit is taking a look and see where the revenue is for the city, so this airport doesn't cost us money and we're missing money and everybody's paying their fair share. And so that's why we're bringing this, that $115 a month, starting effective January 1st, 2022, and then going forward from there.
Counselors, any, any questions, Mr. Patsic?
One. I'm just curious, who's the beneficiary of the increase in fees? Does that go to support the airport?
Yes, yes, that's airport revenue, so that comes back into the revenue, so you know, it's not a drain on the budget.
Councillor Johnson is next, I can't see him, Councillor Novak, are you done? Councillor, Councillor Johnson?
Thank you. Yes, I trying to lower my hand. Anyway, I from what I read, it we've been a pretty reasonable price for a long time and I, I don't have any problem with it raising to the 115, I think that's pretty reasonable. You know, to park your plane and or whatever and all equipment you have and stuff, so I'd be in favor of revolution, resolution, I said revolution. Oh, let's have a revolution. Sorry about that.
Well done. Thank you very much, are you done, Councillor Johnson?
I am.
Welcome, Councillor Olson, did you have a comment, sir?
Yeah, I think I finally made it in.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I and I'm wondering how many longtime customers do we have in these T hangars? Maybe somebody's asked that, I'm sorry, I'm late getting in.
Councillor, and this is Transportation Manager Rob Romeo, and we've got 11 people that are leasing these hangars and there's a little bit of turnover, we've had a couple get other hangars and but for the most part, we've got some, some pretty long-term folks that are leasing these hangars.
And do they all have airplanes that they use occasionally in there?
Most of them, some of them, you know, have been parked for quite a while, but there's a, there's a few that are in and out quite a bit, but it's just really hard to find airplane stores, especially covered throughout Oregon at this point in time.
Yeah, I, I think I would be in favor of leaving the the rent as is until the tenant moves out and then raising. It would be my, and would that be extremely difficult to do or would that be something you can handle?
It, it makes it a little bit more difficult, a little more challenging to, to, you know, just because, you know, if we raise, just depending on what happens. You know, I don't know if it is just gonna cause everybody to, you know, move out, we don't know that, it's kind of one of those things we have to to kind of, you know, prepare for potentially. That's possible.
And I've also heard that some of those hangars are used just for storage for cars, boats, stuff, otherwise, are the T hangars being used for that?
No, we, we've had some individuals in there that had parked vehicles, but they were military and they used their plane to fly to where they were going and left the vehicles there until they got back.
Well, that, that seems reasonable to me, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councillor Olson, did any other councillor have anything? So do we have, so hi, Councillor Bartholomew, how are you doing? So everybody's here today, did you have any other discussion, council, and what would you like to do?
Mayor, this is Chris, this is on the agenda for Wednesday night, if there's no other discussion.
Great, can we, can you guys bring this back on Wednesday evening? Thank you very much. So, all right, next agenda, I think it counts Director Bailey. Thank you, Mark, Commissioner Matic, Patsic. Next one, agenda item is Fourth Avenue Parking Request, Ron Iverson, page four through seven of the document.
Good afternoon, Councillor. The city staff received a request that was directed to council. Request came from Martin Tina Sicker to Bill Riles. What they were interested in doing is burning Fourth Avenue, block between Washington, California, one-way street, westbound direction, ordered to add angle parking, diagonal parking along the north side of the street. Any conversion on one-lane road or two-way street or one-way street requires a resolution from council. At this point, I'm gonna try hard to share my screen, see if I can't put the sketch that Mr. Riles did. Or change up.
I see your computer screen, which is mighty clean for an engineer. Using 30,000 icons on engineers' computer.
I know, I'm so jealous looking at that garage.
You see it now, Councillor Novak?
I see it, I just was having a hard time understanding Mr. Irish.
Okay.
Is anyone else having audio issues there?
Like you're talking to a
Try and speak up, so this, this sketch shows a change, the signers proposing Fourth Avenue, you can see diagonal parking along the northbound. City staff looked at it, pretty much just to see if it was feasible, so is it possible to make the change? And we decided to bring the request forward to council, see if he wanted us to continue investigating this possibility with the signature on. Way the street is set up now, purl up parking on both sides. About eight on-street spaces on both sides, so 16 total on the block. A diagonal parking on the north side would add somewhere between 20 and 22 spaces, would be more spaces. Yeah. This kind of background information, this block of Fourth Avenue is within the downtown parking assessment. The significance of that is that like other properties in the core downtown retail area, any development that occurs in this area has no requirement to provide on-street parking. So everything that we have is essentially on-street, there are some private parking lots, some publicly owned parking lots in the downtown district. There's no requirement the city can pose to do development by on-street spaces. The signers do own the property on the block, there's six different property owners, signers own the northeast corner of California Ford. That property's been the subject of some recent land use decisions. There was a fairly controversial demolition permit that occurred at Oakford historic venue. More recently, there's been a site plan application for mixed use development on our corner. That was approved, that being appealed to by Uber, Uber remanded it back to the city, which is still where it is at the moment. Still want back to what's happening. If the council was interested in this concept, the next step, I think, would be to direct staff to continue discussions with the signers and their consultant, flesh out what, what their proposal is. For instance, what, what destruction would have to occur? What kind of participation they, they think they versus the city would do in order to accomplish it? In order to get to diagonal parking here, some of the improvements at the staff levels included would have to happen. To curb return, each end, north side of the block, Washington and California would have to be rebuilt. Portion of, of the north side of the street right now has curb all length, no gutter. The east side of the block has no curb at all. So the, the existing curb would need to be taken out, replaced with curb and gutter, probably sidewalk, along the length of the block. So some, some fairly substantial construction would have to occur in order to allow that.
So I have several councillors have their hand up, so councillor, would you like to hear from Mr. Riles and Mrs. Signer before we start asking our questions? Okay, so, Mr. Riles, can you please join the conversation? We want to, we still want to talk to you, Ron, but we'd like to hear from you as well.
Hi, I'm trying to start my video, but it won't start, so can you hear me?
I can, five by five.
Okay, so basically, as Ron said, and it was a little garbled, but this has been a long process, the area is zone mixed-use commercial. And our concern and the reason for this diagonal parking is a lot to do with hap, what happened over with Calipria Brewing in that neighborhood. Is that as Calipria Brewing became a popular place, that neighborhood had, was adversely impacted by people not having a place to park near the brewery and expanding out into the neighborhood. And so the city did a similar solution over there. So we thought it made sense here that if we were gonna bring in some commercial mixed-use, a little grocery store or a coffee shop, that we do everything we could to allow for greater parking near these commercial areas so as not to adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood. And so even though, as Ron pointed out, there is no requirement for us to provide this parking. If you go back in the record, we spoke many times saying we would like to propose something once this gets through planning that would help to alleviate parking in that area. And I'm not sure if Ron or Tina Signer is online yet, I know they were trying to get back into town from being out of town. But having talked to them, they are happy to contribute to or participate in any costs that are required along their street frontage to improve that. And to work with the city and with Ron in any way to make this happen. Both because it, it will help the businesses that go into these buildings to be viable and it will take what we feel would be an unnecessary impact from the local residential community away, so that you don't have people that are visiting these commercial enterprises parking throughout the residential neighborhood.
That it, thank you, I see M. Signer on here, Mr. Signer, would you like to speak? So he's just listening mode. So I'm gonna go ahead and have the council, the first friend I saw up was Councillor Novak and then second was Councillor Smith. I believe Councillor Olson had his hand up a little bit too.
Forgive me, my hand was up earlier when I was having a hard time understanding Mr. Irish. And so, and then I broke in and said that I was having difficulty with the audio, that was the only reason my hand was up, my apologies.
We are, we're struggling with the, the garble. So Mrs. Signer, go ahead, please. I cannot hear you. I cannot hear you. Okay, so, Mr. Riles, can you please join the conversation? We want to, we still want to talk to you, Ron, but we'd like to hear from you as well.
Hi, I'm trying to start my video, but it won't start, so can you hear me?
I can, five by five.
Okay, so basically, as Ron said, and it was a little garbled, but this has been a long process, the area is zone mixed-use commercial. And our concern and the reason for this diagonal parking is a lot to do with hap, what happened over with Calipria Brewing in that neighborhood. Is that as Calipria Brewing became a popular place, that neighborhood had, was adversely impacted by people not having a place to park near the brewery and expanding out into the neighborhood. And so the city did a similar solution over there. So we thought it made sense here that if we were gonna bring in some commercial mixed-use, a little grocery store or a coffee shop, that we do everything we could to allow for greater parking near these commercial areas so as not to adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood. And so even though, as Ron pointed out, there is no requirement for us to provide this parking. If you go back in the record, we spoke many times saying we would like to propose something once this gets through planning that would help to alleviate parking in that area. And I'm not sure if Ron or Tina Signer is online yet, I know they were trying to get back into town from being out of town. But having talked to them, they are happy to contribute to or participate in any costs that are required along their street frontage to improve that. And to work with the city and with Ron in any way to make this happen. Both because it, it will help the businesses that go into these buildings to be viable and it will take what we feel would be an unnecessary impact from the local residential community away, so that you don't have people that are visiting these commercial enterprises parking throughout the residential neighborhood.
That it, thank you, I see M. Signer on here, Mr. Signer, would you like to speak? So he's just listening mode. So I'm gonna go ahead and have the council, the first friend I saw up was Councillor Novak and then second was Councillor Smith. I believe Councillor Olson had his hand up a little bit too.
Forgive me, my hand was up earlier when I was having a hard time understanding Mr. Irish. And so, and then I broke in and said that I was having difficulty with the audio, that was the only reason my hand was up, my apologies.
We are, we're struggling with the, the garble. So Mrs. Signer, go ahead, please. I cannot hear you. You're muted. There, you should be on now. You're muted again, he has a lag. Okay, you're open now. I see your hand, can you? So I'm gonna have, go ahead and have Mayor, Councillor Smith go and we'll come back to Mr. Signer, it's his audio working.
Thank you. I, we are going to be hearing the remand of this land use case on October 13th, I think any discussion of this, this change should be postponed until after that remand is out of the way, I think this is premature.
Thank you for that, Councillor Smith, I tend to agree with you on that, Councillor O. Johnson?
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing, because I didn't know where the land use issue was at this point, other than it was back to the council and I hadn't heard anything about it, so I believe too that this should just be put off a till after we take it on as council, thank you.
Okay, so councillor, councillor Kupczynski.
I was just giving a thumbs up to that suggestion that we postponed until the, the remand hearing is done.
Thank you, there, councillors, you're pretty much in agreement with that? Why don't you get a thumbs up, also, okay, good. So let me give Mr. Signer an opportunity to speak and then we'll go ahead and move to the next item. Thank you, Mr. Irish, Ron and Bill, Mr. Riles. So go ahead, Mark. He's having an audio problem, so we are gonna meet, so the council would like to bring this back on the 13th after we discuss the, the remand. And I think we're all in agreement with that suggestion by Councillor Smith.
Yeah, I, I think that Mark and I are fine with that, in fact, we were caught a little off-guard for this, we thought this was gonna happen after the remand and then, so we were a little surprised to see it as well, we're, we're fine.
So, yeah, councillor, next time you see something like that, I miss it, it's give me a call and we can go ahead and remove it from the agenda until we actually get it all lined up, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, so next on the agenda item will be, so council staff, go ahead and bring that back on the 13th if you don't mind. For, for, so expansion of low-income assistance program, Director Jaeger, Sean Park and the city manager is gonna bring us some information to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and yes, I'm joined by Gina Jaeger, Finance Director, and Sean Park, IT Director, who is also Project Manager for the implementation of the Low Income Assistance Program. So the memo that you have in your packet is pretty self-explanatory, what we'd like to do this evening is answer any questions you have, but before I ask you for your questions, I want to remind you that to truly establish a low-income assistance program and to try to keep the complexity of this program and the administrative overhead to a minimum, staff are recommending that we expand the eligibility across the current water low-income assistance program and the city services fee by removing the senior and disability requirements or criteria. This will, it's estimated that this will increase eligible customers from 100, about 130 to about 1,500. However, it's important to note that it'll, it will decrease city services fee revenues by about $81,000 annually. And you'll remember, you had set the, the fee, the base fee, the base rate at $9. So there is obviously no, any, any support that we provide to the low-income assistance program will come out of that, those revenues. This, this aligns the criteria for this program with CSC. And by streamlining the signup with CSC and increasing the eligibility, we expect that more people will be encouraged to sign up. We'll need to renegotiate our contract with CSC by, we anticipate by about November 1st, but certainly by the end of the year. And our agreement with them needs to be in place before we can advertise a new program. And if you concur with this direction that's described within the memo, we just need an indication from you that we're proceeding in the right direction. So with that, before I ask for your questions, let me ask Gina Jaeger and Sean Park if they have anything to add. And there's Sean.
I see Sean. There's Director Jaeger there.
And Sean, we, we've got you as muted, it's not coming through, so. Well, it's still muted. If you, if you need to pass something along, I just, just send me a text and I'll pass it on for you, how about Gina?
I don't have anything to add this evening, as Peter said, I think the memo explains everything pretty well. Diane Marzinski, my procurement person, is currently working on an updated IGA with CSC, so we're hopeful that will go forward in the relatively near future.
Thanks Gina. Mayor, that completes our presentation, if you have any questions.
So I see councillors who have other questions, Councillor Smith was first up.
Thank you, I think that some of the councillors had been concerned when we were discussing the city services fee that it should, that people should be eligible for a reduction in rates if they were having a hard time financially as a temporary situation, not permanently low income as this, the current program and the change would address. Somebody's out of work for six months, they can't pay their bills or they've had some kind of financial setback, I believe that that was the sentiment that I was hearing expressed by fellow councillors, this would not address that, is that correct? Something that was, is a temporary financial hardship.
Well, we have, I wish Sean Park was able to talk, Gina, I would ask you to, to comment, but in the meetings that we've had, we haven't talked about the temporary hardship, we can certainly consider that and see what that would add, you know, of course, that would be, that would be subject to a lot of assumptions, estimating what that would cost. So I, we're not, I'm not prepared to tell you or give you an estimate of what it would, but we can certainly take a look at that. Anything to add?
I don't. We had just looked at this from the point of view of a low income assistance program for ongoing assistance, but nothing temporary.
We can do that.
Any other councilors have anything? Councilor Olson?
Oh, yeah. Am I, am I turned on? Yeah.
Yes, you are.
My concern is for both situations. One, people who are perennially low income, but also businesses who have really suffered due to this COVID virus and are temporarily behind on their bills to the city. So I, I would like to consider both kinds of hardship. And I think the case we're considering right now in this particular discussion is people who are perennially low income. And if there are too many charges, facing the possibility of losing wherever they live. And I'm very much in favor of it. And I'm curious too how the median income in Lynn County compares to the median income in the city of Albany. Does anybody have that information?
I don't have that information ready at hand, Councilor Olson, but we can certainly find that out.
No, it's, it's nothing crucial, just curiosity if you had it by chance. So I'm very much in favor of this proposal.
So thank you very much, Councilor Olson. Any other councilors have any comments or questions? Councilor Bartholomew? You're muted.
I was trying to unmute. Thank you. I, I was just, my question is basically, what is the goal date for implementation?
Right. What, what I had mentioned was that we hope, we're hoping to have an IGA ironed out with CSC by November first as we look, look into the future. But you know, I would say the worst case is by the end of the year.
Thank you.
So looking at a January one start date?
Well, hopefully sooner than that, but yes, that's the current projection, conservatively.
So the, so thank you very much. The comment I have is along the lines of what Councilor Smith was saying. If we have people that are temporarily or in a, you know, six month or five month out of, out of employment type situation with unemployment, how are we gonna look into that as far as, are we gonna do the honor system? Are they things do return to normal? Are we gonna ask them to to return back to the normal pay, pay rate?
Well, remember, we're gonna work as partners with CSC on this. So as we get into the details of how to administer this program, I would ask you to wait until we can bring CSC in and perhaps join us with the next update to you to tell you how, how ex, how, how exactly the program will be, will be run. And on their end, they'll be doing the assessment of individual clients and they'll be able to answer how you can make those guarantees happen.
Thank you very much. Council, are we have, oh, excuse me, Councilor Johnson?
Yeah. I agree that we should wait for CSC to come, but my idea was with, with the low income, they're gonna be low income, probably like they are right now. But for the people who are having struggles, possibly it could be for like a, a certain period of time and then they reapply. You know, like, okay, this is for six months, you know, put a end, end on it and then reapply so that little easier to keep track of that way rather than I mean, people are gonna forget too. You know, they're going about with their lives trying to exist. And so this might not be at the head of their, you know, agenda. So it's just a thought. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor. I think Councilor Olson had a comment and I'll make another comment and we'll watch the next item.
Yeah, briefly, if I fall on hard times, how do I know how to get in touch with CSD? Or do I get in touch with the city?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm sure that CSC has a way of advertising their services to their potential clients. And of course, we have a way of doing that as well with utility bills. So, and of course, the website. So there's, there's a multitude of different avenues for marketing.
Okay, just so we do it. People know that it's a real.
Oh, Sean's, are you there?
Sean here?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry about that. I rejoined and everything seems to be okay now. I apologize for that interruption. I did want to provide a little bit of clarification in that the existing low income program within the water utility is, is permanent, is and was permanent. And we've been operating under the assumption that we wanted to expand that permanent program from, you know, from a that we've used throughout history here. And increase the, the, the number of eligible customers due to the added burden of the city services fee cost. So that, that's where we're at today. We hadn't really looked at it in the frame of mind as it being temporary or a hardship type element to get people over the hump because of COVID or anything like that. This was a reworking of a permanent program, but we're happy to also look at, at other alternatives for short-term impacted folks, which would be a different, a different set of data to look at. And like Peter said, it would be a, a, a different ball of wax.
So, so I do think, I think that we should wait till like everyone's suggest, suggesting for our P C S C to be on board. Go ahead, City Manager.
Just to answer Councilor Olson's question, that in two thousand nineteen, the household median income in Albany was sixty thousand, six hundred. And in Lynn County, it was fifty-five thousand, eight hundred.
That's closer than I thought it might be. Thank you.
So our council, thank you, Peter. Councils are coming back with the IGA. We'll meet with CSC to talk about that on the temporary fix on the short term. Ray is good. Councilor Potenz is good. Councilor Smith suggested. Councilor Johnson's good. Councilor, you comfortable with that? Councilor Olson's good with it. Councilor Bartholomew, you good with that?
It's okay.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Novak? Okay, I, sorry, I read your lips actually. So we're gonna wait until CSC comes on board. Go ahead, Peter.
Just one clarification that, you know, we're talking about assistance and the current assistance program is for residential customers only. So we don't currently offer any business, any low income business, low income assistance to businesses. Just a point of clarification.
Yeah, Councilor Smith, thank you. Your Councilor Smith?
I suggested it because other councilors had, I brought the subject back up because other councilors had expressed a concern about that in previous discussions. That's the only reason I mentioned it. I know that it has the potential to be a bookkeeping nightmare for the amount of accounts that we have. And anyway, I, I recognize temporary poverty certainly and understand that, that that's a problem for, for everyone, but I just wanted to clarify that I was expressing the wishes of other councilors.
Understood. Thank you. So Peter, your hand's still up. Okay, Sean Park, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Just as a point of clarification for myself, we're, we're, we're pausing this effort to wait for CSC's involvement in, in, I need a little clarification in what regard?
I think we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna continue. We wanna find out what can happen if we do a temporary IGA when we, or even moving forward.
Right. That's, that's the, that's the message I got as well, Mayor, that you want us to continue. You just want us to also look at temporary assistance.
Correct. That's what I got from.
Thank you.
That makes sense, Sean. Excellent.
It does. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next agenda item is IGA with Oregon Cascade West Council of Governments for Loan Administration Services, Direct Manager Sherry. Pages nine, nine through nineteen in your packet.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. Good to see you guys. I was a little distracted. I was just texting my son to remember to put the chickens in tonight. It looks like he killed a couple last night. The, the raccoons, I was looking out our window. I'll just take a minute here this evening for you. I think you have the memo I gave you, but this evening staff's asking council to approve the IGA between the city and the Oregon Cascade West Council of Governments for Economic Development Loan Administration, Administration Services, which the council approved budget for during the last budget cycle. Just a couple of key takeaways. The council's made a big impact. What do you always recognize it? I know there's been some turnover here in recent years, but the council's made a big impact on economic and business development opportunities in the city. And one of the ways is through, through giving loans. And it's a definitely a tool that this council does not want to lose. In recent years, the economic development loans totaling little, well, two point eight million and change. With that investment, there's been well over thirty four million dollars of private investments been leveraged with that, those funds. So that's a twelve X impact, pretty significant. And I know the number looks a little hokey because it came out to be a hundred, but we went down and totaled and spoke through all the businesses we've interacted with on loans in the last couple of years. And it came out to exactly a hundred jobs retained and created. So no, no small impact there as well. Managing loans, however, is not a core competency of the city, that the actual management side of it. Keep in mind that we view these funds as revolving loan fund, meaning we assume they'll come back with interest, which means you can repurpose those funds for other additional economic development purposes moving forward with the, the gain of some of the interest as well, which is a, a great thing to be focused on here. But when it comes to quickly knowing how much money is out, how much has been repaid on a loan by loan basis, how much interest has been accrued on loan by loan basis. So you can use that for forecasting, looking at maybe current or future projects. Our current financial system and staffing loads in the finance department just really aren't well-suited to answer those questions on a regular basis and, and quickly. Additionally, when it comes to modifications to loans, which happens from time to time, or maybe an early payments received that falls outside of the normal amortization schedule, it's difficult with our current finance software to adapt to that. So executing this IGA with the business lending department at the COG allows the city to be more nimble and taking advantage of economic development opportunities as they come up and forget forecasting for longer term projects as well. As an aside, OCOG's been providing these services for Lincoln County for some time now. And in fact, when I came on with the city, it became pretty obvious to me that we need to explore something to augment or modify the way we're managing these loans, because it was just a very difficult process to, to wade through and it made it difficult to respond to opportunities as they came up. Lincoln City's been very happy with that. And in fact, I think Sandra Easdale's online with us today. If there's any questions for her, she is the lead business lending officer at the COG. They do a lot of business financing. You guys may know that they're an SBA lender, a Small Business Administration lender, approved lender here in the area, and administer several different loan programs depending on what funding is available. So she's here and I'm here to answer questions as well, if you have any.
Thank you. Councilor Johnson?
Yes. I'm sure that COG would be a, you know, do a great job, but I was wondering, Seth, we had a relationship with another lender when we were giving out loans before, and I just wondered, is this just on a bigger scale that maybe they couldn't handle or are they specialized?
That's a great question, Councilor Johnson. And so when it came to Community Lending Works, who was the, what was the entity we used to manage the loans and grants that came through various pots of money as it related to COVID? They're not really suited to do what we need in this case. Well, they might be, but actually business lending services are often based on a percentage of how much money you're lending. And so it becomes quite expensive for many kind of folks who could do this if they could, when you're looking at, say, four percent, which is pretty average to administer these loans when it comes to over two million dollars, it's quite expensive. And so the COG services are tailored in such a way that it's actually very reasonable on a dollar cost basis to administer these long term. And so they provide sort of a unique service in, in that space.
Yeah, going, going through the list, it looks like they, when I first saw staff, I thought, wait a minute, which staff? Their staff, our staff? I thought, man, you're taking a lot on. But anyway, then I found, realized it was their staff. And the main question I have is that they're gonna take care of all the paperwork and they will also do the end of the year sending of the statements for IRS and everything like that. Is that correct?
Yeah, and monthly, oh, well, not to the IRS. So she's, Sandra's shaking her head, but in terms of reporting, that can be, that, that will be more frequent than, than annually. In fact, they can report to us on a much frequent, more frequent basis. But Sandra, do you want to go ahead and speak to that?
Yes, thank you very much, Councilor Johnson. What we do is report to the city and then the city sends out the year-end statements because we collect the payments and then we forward the principal payments and the interest to the city and therefore they are the ones that will report it to the IRS and to the borrowers on that end.
Okay, I can't, I can't think of the farm name, but it's the, whatever W.
Ten ninety eights that go out.
Yeah. Okay, okay, that, that's great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other councilors have any questions or concerns? So would you like to bring this back on Wednesday for further discussion?
Yes.
It looks like everybody's nodding yes. So Director Jaeger, oh, excuse me, Seth. Manager Seth, can you bring that back on Wednesday for us?
Yeah, we've included in the packet then. If there isn't any specific questions, this might be a point of order for, for Peter, but I believe it's included in the consent agenda for your approval on Wednesday. If there's no more discussion at this point.
Council, we have discussion on Wednesday or no?
I don't think we need any discussion. I don't need to discuss it.
Do we, do we all agree with that? Like a consensus?
Yeah.
Council? You guys okay with that? Okay, I got everybody's hand up. Good. All right, thank you. Go ahead and bring it back, Seth.
Will do.
All right, next on the agenda is
me again.
Thank you. House Bill twenty-three forty-three, local enterprise zone exemption, and that's the same guy that's gonna speak to us again. So Seth, you have the floor?
Yeah, hey, I just noticed when I pull up the agenda packet this morning, I don't think my memo made it. Did you guys get a copy in your version?
I haven't seen the memo.
Well, I am sorry for that because I wrote a great memo for you. So you missed out, but I'll try to give you the high points here. And if you have questions, you feel free to ask me, okay?
Sure.
So staff's again requesting the approval of a resolution that allows for local enterprise zones, of which Albany is one. Some management and, or some flexibility for qualifying firms or businesses who are affected by the COVID nineteen pandemic. So let me just explain how that looks. As you guys know, the COVID nineteen pandemic has created a variety of serious and difficult challenges for businesses across many sectors and sizes. Small, large firms alike have felt the impact on their workforce, supply chains, logistics, market demand, or any number of other areas. During the two thousand twenty-one Oregon Legislative Session, House Bill twenty-three forty-three was attached, and again, I had this as an attachment for you with an explanation. I'm sorry that didn't make it somehow. Again, we'll talk about that, but it was passed in order to give local enterprise zones the flexibility to relax employment requirements for qualifying enterprise owned firms. So just to step back, you guys recall, we have our enterprise zone, which allows us to use as a recruitment tool for businesses coming to the area, coming to town from outside of the area or expanding, significantly expanding operations here to allow for local property tax abatement for the space of three years, so long as they increase their employee number at least ten percent and make a certain investment in their new facilities, okay? So during the COVID nineteen pandemic, reduced employee numbers presents a real additional challenge for qualified enterprise owned businesses because they're required to maintain that minimum level through, through the duration of their exemption, their, their property tax exemption. So by no fault of their own, if they're affected by COVID, they had to lay employees off to stay solvent. They would get the double hit of owing back. Um, they would get the double hit of owing back property taxes for that same tax year. Again, to really no fault of their own, if they weren't able to maintain those employee numbers. So what HB 2343 is allowed is on a local basis, enterprise zones to make a decision to say for the next two tax years, uh, 2122 and 2223 to, actually, sorry, 2021 and 2122, those tax years to relax unemployment requirement so that they can build those things back and not get the double hit with repaying taxes. So during the critical time of recovery, staff would strongly encourage the council to adopt uh, the resolution that you do have in your packet and, uh, to help encourage and support the recovery of our local E-zone qualifying firms in rehiring employees and recovering from the pandemic. So that's along the short of it. I have to just give two plugs real quick. One is, um, you know, the Lynn County Assessor's Office is actually the entity who manages the paperwork and the, well, the, once a firm qualifies their annual tax returns and their qualification. They had just been fantastic. I love working with the assessor's office here. Andy and his team are awesome. Mark Wilkinson's the individual who looks over this program for industrial businesses and they're just been really great. They are passing the exact same res, well, bringing to their, their commissioner is the exact same resolution to pass on Tuesday, and we need some synchronization because we're actually, they're a co-sponsor since they administer this from a tax perspective for the city. They're on board with it, um, and are supportive of it. So I wanted you to know that. And then just secondly, I'll just make a quick plug for the Oregon Economic Development Association, OEDA. Um, that's the, the, the largest and most, well, it is the only organization really statewide for economic development practitioners. Am I? I lost myself on the window. So it represents me and my peers, and I actually had the pleasure of serving as the president of that organization this year, and they, we saw this issue coming and actually created the legislation, found partners around the state with other associations and brought this forward and got it passed. And I'm just really proud to be a part of that team, uh, to see really practical proactive legislation being passed that benefits economic development here in the city of Albany. So I'll answer questions as you have them.
So Dirk, you're, uh, Kupcinski, uh, Counselor Kupcinski has a question. Counselor Johnson after that. Ray, you still need it?
Yes, Seth, uh, from your perspective, maybe you already mentioned it and I just wasn't hearing it right, uh, at all. Uh, because I'm all in favor of moving this to Wednesday and having it approved, but how many businesses do we have that would be able to take advantage of it and possibly, uh, how many people and dollars are we talking about?
Well, so we actually know exactly the number of businesses here. And so there's, there's about, I think right now there's seven qualifying firms. There's a few more coming on this year. There's only one that we're aware of that has been hurt so badly in terms of their, their employment numbers that would take advantage of that. And that's the Pacific Cast Campus. Um, right down, uh, on, yeah, right downtown there or, um, in industrial area. They, um, between their site there and then the, the former Selmet site, right? It's owned under a large parent, parent company now. They, they had huge numbers of employees that they had to lay off and they're currently rehiring. In fact, they're rehiring so quickly. They, they can't find people quickly enough to rehire. So that's a good thing. Things have turned around for the industry, but we only anticipate the Pacific Cast Campus qualifying, uh, or even submitting their own qualifications uh, for this or to, to it, to qualify for it, uh, moving forward. Now, just keep in mind, in the resolution, you might have noted that any firm who's currently enjoying enterprise zone benefits can qualify for this if they've been affected by the COVID crisis, have had to reduce their employment levels and can demonstrate that to us through, through a memo. It's going to happen on very short order. Selmet's already, or Pacific Cast already did a similar note to us and the assessor's office this year prior to the current tax cycle to let them know they were in trouble, so to speak. Um, and we're hoping that this legislation would pass as well. But Ray, to your question about, um, what's the impact? There actually is no financial impact. And that's what's kind of neat about this is they'll continue to enjoy the tax abatement, which they currently have at no cost to the city. And then these funds that they would have had to repay now can be used in stabilizing and rehiring. So that's, that's really how, what the trade-off is.
Thank you. Excellent. Counselor Johnson and then Counselor Bartholomew.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just want to, uh, thank you and your, and the group, Seth, for actually thinking ahead and getting this through the legislature. Uh, I mean, what a better way to help the businesses and not make them worry so much and assist them rather than, uh, put such a big hindrance on them that they can't make it through. So I think it's a great thing and I look forward to, uh, passing it on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson.
Excellent. So Counselor Bartholomew.
Yes, I noticed in there it says the must be adopted within forty-five days of the law's effective date for purposes of 2021, 22 tax year or for 2022, 23 tax year. So can you help me understand how that works?
Yeah, absolutely. So I guess I gave you the tax years wrong and I'm sorry. I always think about it because the 2020 year, when it comes to federal taxes hits in 2021, that's when they submit their, their paperwork. So, uh, it just allows us to actually extend this benefit. It's actually for either year, uh, not one or the other. It can be one, the other or both. In this case, I'm suggesting both years. That way we don't have to go back and try to pass another resolution next year if there's still an issue with the rehiring of, of minimum staffing levels. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. It was very confusing when I read that.
Well, I have to, I have to tell you that we had a the forty-five day period is, uh, September 25th. This is very, very soon. And, and that's the date in which the county actually has to go back and ask for these back taxes if firms, uh, didn't qualify under this exemption. And we just got sample language from the state on this resolution like last week. So it's been a really quick turnaround and we've have worked quite quickly to get it done. So I'm, I'm glad we can get it on your scheduled in time.
Thank you, Counselor Novak.
Thank you. I am just curious and I, it could be that I've missed something, but how does a business know if it's in that enterprise zone? Is that a specific geographic area?
Yeah, so the, actually, all of the sort of job creating land, so this is commercial industrial land within the city of Albany, uh, proper. Is the enterprise zone. That's how we read, we redid the enterprise zone when we had to re-up a few, few years ago, Counselor Novak. So it used to be that we were part of this much larger sort of Lynn County wide zone, and now we have our own specific one because we're a metropolitan city at this point, over 50,000 people. So when we redid that, uh, all firms qualify technically as being inside the zone, but only certain types of businesses can actually qualify for enterprise zone benefits. And even then, they have to meet certain requirements. And so you'd have, you, you can't be an existing business who's just been here doing business without making significant investments in expanding your footprint and your, your, your size of business and number of employees. And you have to be a, um, traded sector company. So these are firms who are creating and selling their wares or services or products outside of the region and bringing new dollars back. So this doesn't include service sector.
I understand.
Companies. Yep.
Hello? Are we done? It's mighty quiet. Any other councils have any questions? Okay, so I guess we're done for the evening. Let me go ahead and finish up the agenda. We get to the back and the bottom of it.
Thank you all. Good to chat with you.
Thank you, Seth. And that's for the House Bill. Uh, any business from the council? Any councils have anything? Counselor Smith?
Yes, two things. One is that during the meeting, we received an email from Mary Werner, who was wanting to speak under business from the public, and I can read that to you if that's appropriate. That was related to the Fourth Avenue traffic.
I did ask her to come back Wednesday if she'd like.
Okay, I can read this, this email and that might, that might, uh,
So go ahead, Counselor Smith.
Trump that. Um, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. I was not able to speak at the city council work session this afternoon. I was not given the link to join through Zoom and was only able to watch via YouTube. I am greatly relieved that this has been postponed until after October 13. I would very much appreciate being included in the process going forward, as I am the only current resident on the north side of Fourth Avenue between Washington and Kalapuyia. There were three historic homes destroyed by the developers. That is the extent of their hold in this area. It was misleading to suggest they own more of this block, city block than they do. I believe it was stated that they own six lots. However, one of the three homes faced Kalapuyia, so therefore those lots do not face Fourth Avenue. Sincerely, Mary Werner. I had one other item as well. I was contacted last week by, um, a constituent who is the owner of Spirit Espresso at the corner of Queen and Hill. Um, she was contacted by, um, Officer Shandell. This is the, um, my Wheeler Dealer and urgent care, anyway. She was contacted by Officer Shandell, um, in pursuit of enforcing the, um, removal of port, temporary porta potties from food trucks and coffee kiosks. They have a, a porta potty at that location. They've owned the business for seven years. The porta potty is for the use of employees only. It is not open to the public. It is locked. It, they have an agreement with Wheeler Dealer for use of their restrooms during the, the, uh, Wheeler Dealer's business hours, but they don't open until eight o'clock and Spirit Espresso opens at 5:30. So they have a, a bit of a gap there between, um, availability of facilities for employees. She said that, um, Officer Shandell had told her there was one other coffee kiosk with a similar situation in town and, um, whoever that is, uh, have been resisting removing their porta potty. Ms. Robbins, who owns Spirit Espresso is, uh, understands if that's the law, it's the law, uh, and they will have theirs removed. But she wanted to make us aware of that, that particular little, um, peccadillo and, um, if we, if there was any other discussion that we wanted to have or, uh, reconsider, it's, it's up to the council. I said I would bring that to your attention.
So, thank you. Um, any other councils want to address that or have any questions about that?
Yes, um, I think it, thank you. I think it seems quite reasonable that if a building or a business is open at 5:30 in the morning and there's no other way, there's no other facility but a porta potty, it, and it's locked so that not just anyone can, you know, use it. I, I think it makes sense to provide that sort of accommodation. And I'm just wondering why it is that Officer Shandell or the city would want them to remove it? Why, what reasoning is behind that?
It's in the code.
In the code.
Oh, the code.
Those are rules and must be enforced.
We're also the body that can change those rules, so.
Exactly.
Yes, I would be much in favor of that.
So, um, I do know of another coffee shop that removed their porta potty based on input from their, um, Officer Shandell as well. And they opened their doors at 5:30 as well for their employees and it was locked. And so they have a rent raiser with another restaurant. We have one with a restaurant in town. Maybe we should have the staff bring us back something and discuss this further because it is a small business, mom and pop, not owned by a corporation. Something we might want to discuss.
Should.
Any council have any concerns about that?
I'm all for doing anything.
I'm all in favor of it.
Small businesses, small businesses. We give so many breaks to so many other businesses. How about, how about giving a tiny business a break, a small business? I'm, I don't know. I'm all in favor of doing something.
So Steph, could you bring something back to us to look at for an exemption or something along those lines for business in that situation? Will do. Thank you. Okay, next. Thank you, Counselor Smith. Um, Matilda, Counselor Novak, you're actually next on my screen.
Yeah, I had my hand raised because I received an email from a gentleman and I didn't know if I could read that now or if I should wait for another day or, or what.
Uh, Ms. Warner was given exemption because she was actually supposed to speak to us.
Okay, so I should save it maybe for Wednesday?
Yeah, well, actually, this is, actually, how long is, how long is it?
It's, uh, it's an email that I received from a gentleman and, uh, I think I saved it on my screen. Yeah, um.
Well, it's your time. It's business from the council, so you can use your time for that.
Okay, well, then I'll go ahead and share his concern. He says, "In the general vein of the city budget, um, my wife and I have been having ongoing trouble with Comcast TV service. I will spare you the unpleasant details. I would admit to say that it's frustrating. Several weeks ago, I called the Albany City Offices and asked for the city employee who coordinates with Comcast. I was told there is no such person and was given Comcast's general 800 number to call. This got me to thinking about the franchise fee that shows up on my monthly Comcast bill. The easiest way to find it, uh, so he's got one, then it says $6.49. There's also a regulatory cost recovery item for $4.32. I apologize, my clock is going off. I would guess, he says, that the franchise fee is more likely to be a city fee. I don't know if you are familiar with this topic, but the questions I have are, one, is the franchise fee an Albany city fee? Two, what is the intended purpose of the fee? If Albany doesn't have any employees who coordinate or interact with Comcast, what costs is the fee intended to cover? Why does it exist? Number three, why is it a fee instead of a tax? It sort of came across to me as a type of sales tax, but regardless of that, the real question is, what is the difference between a fee and a tax? And why is this $6.49 charge uh, for February designated as a fee? I appreciate any answer to these questions." He said he reached out to Gina Jaeger in City Finance a while ago, but, um, he just, he would appreciate some, some clarification on this. And I know when I look at my bills, there's so many different things listed. Fees and taxes and all that, that.
The recreators here.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so a franchise fee is a fee that the company pays to the city for the use of our right of ways. In order for them to do business, they use our streets, they, uh, use other areas. It's, it's a fee that they pay to us. It's negotiated with them. However, we don't have any say in how they operate their business outside of that. The fee that they pay us. So I don't remember that conversation, um, with your person. I'm sorry, I don't remember his name.
I didn't mention it. It was Mr. Shaw, Mr. David Shaw.
Oh, oh, I have talked to Mr. Shaw before. Um, and I probably did tell him that the, what he saw on his bill was a franchise fee that the company has negotiated with the city and pays us for the use of our right of ways.
So if I understand this correctly, then in case anyone else should ask me, and so I understand my own bills. So the city contracts with these service providers and then the service providers like Comcast, um, they charge the people in the town to get their money back from what they have to pay the city to do business with the city?
I believe, and please, um, I could, I could have this wrong. I think a portion of it it comes from the company itself and then a portion of it, they are able to charge back to their users.
Yeah, that's certainly looks like that's what they're doing. So I don't know what to say to that.
Thank you, Counselor Novak.
Thank you.
So next is, uh, Counselor Johnson.
Oh, thank you. On Counselor Novak's, uh, question there, she, she really explained it pretty well, as far as I'm concerned, but so is that, that is not a fee? That is something that Comcast pays us? I mean.
Well, so, uh, Director Jaeger.
That's correct. Comcast, Comcast pays us a fee to use our right of ways.
So why is it on the bill or why is it on the utility bill?
Because they charge us to cover it. The city charges them and they charge the users.
It's not on the utility bill. It's on the Comcast bill.
Oh, okay, that's different. That's different. Okay, okay. Gotcha. Other than that, I have nothing. Thank you.
Counselor Kupcinski, you're next up. Nothing? Perfect. Uh, Counselor Smith, do you go first? Counselor Smith went first, I believe. Just Counselor Bartholomew.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Olson?
I'm fine. Nothing tonight.
Right, thank you. Uh, tonight, I just had, I actually have anything. It was just me, just work this weekend. Other than that, uh, city manager report, do you have anything for us this evening?
Nothing, except to remind you that the Planning Commission follows this meeting, the joint meeting with the Planning Commission, and it's using the go-to-meeting platform. So don't, uh, stick around on this Zoom platform. Okay?
Thank you.
Really? Where do we find that?
It should be in the men, the agenda from the Planning Commission meeting.
That was sent out today.
Well, I don't think I got stuff today.
So what that will go into adjournance, so Counselor Olson can find that link. So if somebody can send them the agenda, it'd be great.
Is there any way somebody there can just hang?
Is there any way somebody there can just hang onto this for me?
Well, this, this meeting is just totally different platform, Counsel Olson.
Okay, well, I'll see if I can be there. I'll try.
And I will send you the link again.
Okay.
So good evening and thanks everybody for attending tonight and participating.